It was probably made in New York.
Would you please stand for the foot?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for Monday, June 18th. First order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Move to approve?
Second.
Are there any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail for anyone to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Mary Laird.
And good evening, everyone. Thank you. As you might have read in the local newspaper recently, the United States Postal Service is contemplating moving operations next door from where they currently are. They are having discussions with the General Services Administration about selling them the building currently occupied by the courts. And the United States Postal Service Retail Post Office Building at 151 Church, or what, excuse me, that's where I live, 151 West Street.
It's the heat.
It's the heat. If this occurs, the United States Postal Service operations would be relocated across the parking lot to the building they own at 173 West. At some point, and that's tonight, during the coming weeks, this was sent to me a few weeks ago, we're going to require the assistance of my office to help facilitate a public meeting so that the public can be notified about a potential relocation of services. So right now is the public hearing that the Postal Service has requested, and we have two folks from the United States Postal Service over here, from the federal government, to conduct a very brief public service, uh, meeting just to inform folks at home and folks here that are at the meeting of exactly what their intentions are. So, without further ado, Chris and/or Jim.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't know if anybody knows the postmaster here in Rutland.
If you could just give your names for the record, please.
My name is Chris Madden. I'm a real estate specialist for the United States Postal Service.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Ragosta, postmaster here in Rutland.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. And so I think you've probably, you've already had the letter that explained kind of what the process was, and, um, and actually, um, the gentleman that just spoke a minute ago really kind of summed it up pretty well, um, and I didn't know if there was any questions.
Is there any questions of these two gentlemen in regards to the moving and relocation?
And I, the, I'm actually taking the place of this David Roush who's down in Washington, DC, but I'm a little closer than he is to come up here, so he asked me if I'd...
Is, well, I guess if I may, is there a timeframe that you have for this?
He gave me some talking points, so maybe I'll just run through there.
That'll be great.
There's any questions after that.
Okay.
His first question he has on here is, what is the meeting about? And the meeting about the postal service is exploring plans to relocate the retail services currently provided at the 151 West Street. And then he, the next question was, what is the potential new location for the post office? If the post office were to relocate operations, they would be relocated here at 175 West Street, in adjacent property that the post office currently owns. And he's, in undertaking this potential project, the postal service will complete a process set out in its regulations, and I won't give, I won't go through the, the numbers of the regulation. Well, maybe I will, just, for the record. Thirty-nine CFR 241.4, for soliciting and considering input from the community and local officials. And then the next question he has in here is, why does the postal service need to relocate the post office? The current building is significantly larger than required to accommodate the postal service's operational needs, and additionally, GSA, who is the current tenant in the building, has a long-term need for space in Rutland. And the next question is, if the current post office property is not sold to GSA, will the property be put on the market for sale? The answer is no. The postal service has no plans at this time to put the property on the market for sale. And the next one is, when would the postal service physically relocate to 173 West Main, West Street? And the postal service would remain in the existing building for up to one year after any sale occurs until renovations at 173 are completed? And then, 173 West Street will be handicap accessible? And then, another question that comes up all the time is, if the property is sold to GSA, what happens to the murals that are currently in the building? Ownership and responsibility for those murals will be transferred to GSA as part of any sale.
Okay.
So, I don't know, did I answer all the questions?
Think you did.
Yeah?
Alderman Knott.
Thank you. I did have one question. So, i-if the post office moves from the one building to the building right next door, would the parking still be that same parking lot?
I think the plan is, if that all comes together, would be to retain some of the parking of the courthouse.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We appreciate the update.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I believe that the letter that David Roush sent you had his name and address, so if anybody wanted to comment or send anything, they can to him.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, anyone else, um, to address the board on matters not on the agenda? If not, we are under communications from the mayor. Mary Laird.
Okay. Good evening once again. Just a couple of quick things, both announcements of events that are coming up this week. I wanted to make sure the public was aware. Uh, one that has not been advertised quite so well, but we want to let people know that Wednesday morning of this week at 11:00 AM, we are having a ceremony and unveiling of a brand-new Vermont State Historic Site marker honoring the former Governor Israel Smith at the West Street Cemetery. Former Governor Smith, who's buried there, was governor way, way back, even before I was born, in 1807 and 1808. He was the fourth governor of Vermont. I want to thank Ed Larson for his help with the background for the text on the marker, and Tom Giffen, uh, who is our cemetery commissioner, for his great work, of course, uh, with the cemeteries all over the city, and for putting together that ceremony. So again, that one is Wednesday morning at 11:00 AM over at the West Street Cemetery. And also, a little later this week, on Saturday morning, uh, at 11:00 AM, we will be having our grand opening and ribbon cutting for our brand-new two swimming pools down at White's Pool. Uh, it's a great community success, in that official opening, I hope as many members of the community can come and join us for, again, what we believe is a truly remarkable community achievement. So Saturday, 11 o'clock, uh, at White's Pool, it'll be a day-long celebration.
Great. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
So we have additions and deletions to the agenda.
We have one, which is an outside consumption permit, if we could add that to the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Are there any debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are going to move the community development report up from Alderman Humphrey. Uh, we have a number of guests in this way, they can get home before the skies open up again. So I will turn it over to Alderman Humphrey.
Thank you. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on, uh, June 12th at 5:30, adjourned about 6:05. Committee members in attendance were Lisa Ryan, Paul Clifford, Matt Whitcomb, William Knott, and chaired by myself, Melinda Humphrey. Others in attendance were Alderman Davis, Atori and Tomala, as well as Gordon Reschello and Robert Lehman from the Herald, Jim Sabatasso, Erica Walstrom, Leslie Novak, Greta Solza, Marsha Castle, Carol Tashi, Victoria Quint, and Kit O'Connor was on the phone for us. The agenda item was the Amnesty International Proposed Resolution in Support of Refugee Resettlement from the Rutland High School Amnesty International Chapter. Members of the Rutland High School Chapter of Amnesty International presented the resolution to the committee and indicated that they planned to request the same action of other committees, um, I'm sorry, planned to request the same action of other communities represented at Rutland High School. And, um, we've, uh, read the full resolution in a full board meeting and, as well as at a committee meeting at this point, so I'll read a lot of the, um, the last statement on the resolution. Resolved, the Rutland City Board of Aldermen declares its support for the resettlement of refugees in Rutland, no matter their religion, race, nationality, gender identity, sexual orientation, or country of origin, and calls upon other Vermont communities to join them in supporting a stronger national effort to resettle the most vulnerable refugees. After a brief discussion, William Knott moved to recommend to the full board to support the resolution as presented. The motion passed four to one, and I so move.
Second.
Any debate on the motion? Alderman Matthews.
Uh, I just want to say thank you to the Amnesty International Club. Democracy is a precious thing, and the more people who participate in this earnest fashion as you are, the better. And especially when young people participate in civic life, it really warms my heart. So thank you so much for being here.
So the motion is to circulate the resolution? Is that what we're doing? Just approving the resolution?
Approve and circulate.
Okay.
Yes, please.
And it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Could I request a roll call vote, please?
A roll call vote's been requested, so would the clerk please call the roll?
To circulate. Somebody says roll.
Oh. Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So the motion is to, to roll call vote to circulate, or to approve the...
To approve and circulate, for signature.
To approve the resolution and to circulate it for signature.
Correct.
Is the clerk ready to call the roll?
Yes.
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 Okay.
So, motion passes, and we'll circulate for signature. So, while that's happening, we're gonna move on, unless there's anything else, because I believe the students have read, as Alderman Humphrey said, the resolution, spoke to it and twice. So we're gonna go back to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Brennan Duffy, RRA Director, buy-up funding request. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So, we have another request for funding through the Business and Senate Assistance Program. Uh, this time, the request has come from Paige Carrara, who is the current owner of Blush Salon Downtown, and she has a plan to open up a school of cosmetology here in the next year and a half, um, which would be located here in the city. Uh, the school would employ three full-time instructors and one part-time instructor. Uh, she's looking to start off with about sixteen full-time students, and Ms. Carrara is actually here this evening, so I thought she might want to say a word or two, or talk a little bit more about the project. So that'll let her come up and say where.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Like you said, I'm planning on opening a small cosmetology school. We'll start off small the first year. Hopefully sixteen students will become enrolled. We currently don't have anything in southern Vermont to offer for students other than a tech school, um, but the tech schools usually are full. So, what happened was, I opened up Blush Salon, and I've got, had many applicants come in that weren't certified, and I couldn't give them a job. So, with all of the applicants, I decided I was gonna look into opening a cosmetology school. So my determination has gotten me here in front of all of you, and I would love if you guys would come along with me and support me in opening this school and helping our youth in this community stay here and educate them here as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Hey, Brennan?
So, yeah, the IRA is very excited about this, not only a new business opening with some unemployment to go with that, but also providing employment for local businesses in the future and young people to stay here in the area and work. So the recommendation that came from the Redevelopment Authority was for approval of a $10,000 forgivable loan through the buy-up proj- program, sorry, uh, three-year term, zero percent interest with all payments deferred for those three years, and then the loan to be forgiven at the end of the term if everything has been met, and also to recommend a referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for their approval and underwriting of a loan of up to $50,000 through the revolving loan fund we have set up through Heritage.
So moved. Second.
Move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, and, uh...
I would, I would move to approve a $10,000 buy-up loan with a three-year term at zero percent interest, with all payments deferred for three years, the loan to be forgiven at the end of the term provided all requirements have been met, to the Page Elizabeth Academy of Cosmetology.
Second. Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, and, uh...
I would move to approve a $10,000 buy-up loan with a three-year term at zero percent interest, with all payments deferred for three years, the loan to be forgiven at the end of the term provided all requirements have been met, to the Page Elizabeth Academy of Cosmetology.
Second. Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We're all set.
I've been, Madam President, I have another second motion?
Yes.
There was a second one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I would also move to recommend the Page Elizabeth Academy of Cosmetology to referral to HFCU for potential loan financing through the City of Rutland Revolving Loan Fund administered by HFCU and subject to their underwriting and approval.
Second. Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Knott. Anything else, Brennan?
Uh, not right now.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Next up is DPW Commissioner Wenberg, Letter of Intent for Road Improvement Grants. Pages two and three.
This one has to be circulated. Thank you. This should be pretty well self-explanatory. Um, this grant is an, essentially, an entitlement grant, but you have to apply for it, so they'll know how many communities to divide the available funds among. It's eighty percent, so we'd have a twenty percent local obligation, which could be provided through in-kind services by the department, so it's not necessarily cash that's required. And we won't know how much we're getting until they do the math and figure out how many communities, but basically, we do as much of this road-related stormwater improvements as the money will support. And we work with the regional planning commissions who are administering this, the local regional planning commission in each district in the state, they're the ones that are administering this on behalf of the Department of Environmental Conservation. So, it does require an approval resolution, which is the, uh, the letter that is attached and that requires signatures, so that's why we're here. But we can see absolutely no harm in becoming participants in this program, as the requirements to make these improvements are going to, uh, we're going to have to do them one way or the other, and we might as well take eighty percent of the state's money to get it done.
Alderman DePoy?
I'd like to suspend the rules and take the issue up tonight.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman DePoy?
And then I would like to move to approve and circulate for signatures the attached letter of intent to participate in the RPC slash DEC Municipal Roads Grants in Aid Program.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much.
All right. Barbara Spalding, RRA Downtown Transportation Fund Grant Agreement, pages four through eighteen. And Brennan is standing in.
Yep. Uh, so back again, and this is, um, for the Gateway Improvement Grant that the city was awarded.
Yes.
So as is customary, we just need the Board of Aldermen to authorize the mayor to sign the loan documents, and then we will begin the process of going out for bid for both the engineering and after that, the construction cycle of that project.
All the ready to board.
Make a motion to take the issue, suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, um, the aforementioned, um, documents that, uh, will put us into this grant agreement.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Alderman Gillum?
We should probably put the grant number down in that motion.
Um, yeah, we can do that. I was looking for that, actually. Is it the DTF?
Yeah, DTF, yeah, so...
Two thousand eighteen dash two?
All right. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brennan.
Yep.
Next up is Treasurer Markowski, period eleven, Treasurer's Report and Change to Fund Numbers. And you also have your financial highlights for May. Treasurer Markowski's on vacation, so either receive and file or send to finance, whatever your flavor is.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
All those in favor, any debate on the motion to receive and file? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All righty. We are up to Reports of Standing Committees, Aldermany Torrey Finance Committee. Aldermany Torrey.
Thank you, Madam President. It's the Finance Committee report for our June 7th, 2018 meeting. On the agenda is a, two items, the Third Quarter Treasurer's Report Review and the start of the F, uh, Fiscal Year 19 Property Tax Rate Discussion. I served as chair, other committee members present, Alderman Humphrey, Whitcomb and Gillum, other Alderman present, President Davis, Alderman Mattis, and Alderman DePoy was there. Others present, Mayor Laird, Treasurer Markowski, and Assistant City Treasurer Lynn Holmquist. The meeting convened at 5:30 PM to review any questions on the Treasurer's Third Quarter Report and to start the discussion on setting the tax rate. Regarding the Third Quarter Report, Treasurer Markowski noted the different fund balances and how the unassigned fund balance in particular is a moving target, but we need to watch the overall trends. The Treasurer also noted that expenses af, that expenses after the third quarter, after accounting for some grant expenditures, are close to being on target. Alderman Humphrey noted the board's appreciation for the clarity in the Treasurer's quarterly presentations. The committee then began reviewing the process by which we set the property tax rate each year. The Treasurer reviewed the figures used for FY18 and detailed how they were compiled. This included the total general fund appropriations dollar amount, which last year was $21.1 million, and was comprised of the voter-approved budget, as well as the voter-approved debt service and social service agency payments. The non-property tax, uh, tax revenues to the city, which last year was approximately $2.5 million, and is comprised of the rooms, meals, entertainment tax, pilot payments, various rent fees and sales revenue, and the rec department program revenue. The transfers in from the enterprise funds, that's water and sewer, in tune of $1.4 million, and then the surplus or deficit from last, from the previous year. For setting the FY18 rate, this figure amounted to over $1 million that helped offset the budget increase, and was comprised of two main parts. $790,000 that needed to be relinquished from the MS4 and pension assignments, and the board's decision to set the unassigned fund balance at nine percent of the budget, below the board-approved target of ten to fifteen, which allowed the board to return an additional $300,000 to the taxpayer. The net result for FY18 was that the city needed to raise $16 million in property tax revenue to pay for the $21.1 million in voter-approved appropriations. Applied to the grand list, this amounted to a, a tax rate of 1.5932. The committee then discussed the preliminary figures for FY19 that the Treasurer presented. While the figures for the, the general fund appropriations and the transfers in are mostly set, the figures for the revenues and unassigned fund, unassigned fund balance are estimates or projections. The total general fund appropriations is $22.2 million, is up 5.5%, primarily because Mayor Laird's FY19 budget, as passed by this Board of Aldermen and approved by the voters, is up $1.1 million from last year's budget. The transfers from the enterprise funds are minimally higher, about $120,000. And while the wa, non-property tax revenues are not yet known, following historical trends, the Treasurer estimated them to be about even with previous years, around $2.5 million. Because of the many adjustments that need to be made for FY18, the Treasurer assumes zero as the surplus slash deficit that will be available to impact the tax rate. The net result is a projection that the city will need to raise $18 million in property tax revenue to pay for the $22.2 million in voter-approved appropriations. Applied over the grand list, this amounts to a 1.7955 tax rate. This potential property tax rate increase of approximately 20 cents, or almost 13%, equates to an additional $300 a year on the average $150,000 house. I included a chart just so you have some sense of the difference between the two years and what goes through them. You take the general fund appropriations, you subtract out the revenues and transfers in, and then either apply a surplus, or if you have a deficit, you need to account for that. As it says, the tax rate's up 12.7%. The committee also discussed the potential changes in the grand list and how any increase in the grand list would help reduce the tax rate. Currently, the grand list number in Nemrick lists a slight bump up from last year. There was a conversation about, that we had in the committee about Barry's numbers versus the committee's numbers, and, um, because of the timing, we will need to wait to see what that number is. Um, because of the many moving parts that, of the current fiscal year that ends June 30th, the issue will stay in committee so that further discussions can be had prior to the July 16th board meeting, when we need to officially set the rate. Meeting adjourned at 6:20. This report was for information only, and as I said, will stay in committee for future meetings.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Alderman Torrey? Hearing none. I'm gonna keep you there, because we have, have another memo here about special liquor, or is that just information?
That was information only. That's, that's, if we want to go into select committees.
Right.
Um, when we had had the conversation as special liquor committee regarding the incidents downtown, particularly at Hideaway and Center Street Tavern, we had a motion from the board asking the chief to share any information about the calls that they had in the month. The chief forwarded that to me this, uh, this weekend, and I've put it on your desk. Um, we do have a outside consumption permit for one of the taverns in particular, so I thought it was helpful information to have.
Great. Appreciate it. So that was select committees. Any others? Hearing none. Reports of Representative Alderman Clifford, the Rutland County Solid Waste.
Just information only, Madam Chairman.
So this is for information only, talking about recycling, leaf and yard waste, food waste, mercury, bottle changes, et cetera, et cetera. If there's any questions, please feel free to contact Alderman Clifford. Thank you. So we are on Petition Letters, Miscellaneous Communications. First up is a Special Event Permit Request for Coin Drop, American Legion Post 31 Baseball, page 23 to through 27. Is there anyone here from the American Legion? Okay. Alderman Mattis.
Uh, move to suspend the rules, take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis.
And I move, uh, we approve the Special Event Permit Application for the Rutland American Legion Post 31 for their baseball coin drop to be held Saturday, June 30th of this year from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion...
No.
Alderman Gillum voted no. All right. So, we need a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. First up, Scott Reed, Hideaway Tavern, Outside Consumption Request, there are four for each Friday Night Live Event, pages 28 through 35. What is your pleasure? You can approve, you can disapprove, you can send a special liquor committee. The first one, I believe, is July 13th, so there's certainly a time. Excuse me. Aldermany Torrey.
I'll move to approve all four outside consumption permits.
Second. Any debate on that...
And authorize the clerk to sign.
Authorize the clerk to sign. Any debate on that motion? Alderman Mattis.
I'm, I'm just confused. Is it four, or is it three?
Uh, well, it said four on the agenda. We have July 13th, July 20th...
July 27th.
July, but for, okay. So, there's four.
Downtown sidewalk sales.
Any other? Alderman Knott?
I was just going to say, so the first three are for the official Friday Night Live Events?
Right.
And then the fourth one is for the Downtown Rutland Street Party.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have our addition, which is an outside consumption permit for the Bree Wine Bar, 118 Merchants Row, looking for sidewalk use directly in front of buildings from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So moved.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to approve? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We need a motion to go out of the Board of...
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are under unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before this board? Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? Alderman Etori?
If I could, and I was the at-fault party here. We have been, in recent weeks, we've been getting out of the habit of the Aldermen getting our committee reports to the clerk on time, and I was at fault on this time. But it's really helpful when you get them in time, so I would just ask my fellow Aldermen and myself to get them in on time.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? If not, a motion to adjourn?[1758.91]